Right, at 6:00 PM Tuesday, November 14th, we'll call to order the Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting. We will have Ms. Johnston do the invocation and Ms. Graham do the pledge. Please stay.
Father, thank you for this time this evening for us together and plan. Thanks for Mount Pleasant. And we just ask that you help us, guide us to make sure that all the decisions we make are for the best for this city and the citizens of it. In your name we pray.
With allegiance to the divine of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on foundation under God, indivisible, clear, pure, and just for all.
Approval of the agenda?
Make a motion. We approve the agenda.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Approval of the minutes from the prior meeting in September, since we did not have an October meeting?
Make a motion.
Alright, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Chris, we're ready to move to your part. Number five, Sugar Creek Townhomes Preliminary Plaid Approval?
Landmark Plaid request for 2.21 acres identified on tax map 133 parcel 9.06 and located on Sugar Creek Lane for the construction of 16 townhomes. The property is owned R3 High Density Residential. The owner of the property is Mr. Alan Bledge. And the owner has requested a referral on this item to the next planning commission meeting. We have an email to this request also. They are in, applicant is in the audience if you would like to have his statement.
Is that correct?
Correct.
And we'll take a motion on the deferring this project till the December meeting?
I think it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, number six, cottages of preliminary, uh, Bearwood Preliminary Plaid Approval?
Landmark Plaid request for cottage of Bearwood on 78.14 acres identified on tax map 127 parcel 25, parcel 00 and located on Magnolia Drive and Canyon Road for the construction of 95 single-family homes. The property is owned R3 High Residential, High Density Residential. The owner of the property is Noah Marshall. And applicant is in the audience for comments.
Okay. This is a project that we'd approved once before, year and a half ago, almost two years ago. Is that correct?
From my understanding, that's correct. The time limit ran out for one year unfortunately on the, on their back of horse.
Okay. Are there any, are there any new issues with it from a city standpoint versus last time?
Yes, one issue that we're just discussing of the last week is related to water availability capacity. So, one condition of approval that we guess consider is to phase the overall preliminary plaid, breaking out chunks of 20 to 25 lots per phase. That'll help us track and gain capacity as it develops. Thank you, Captain. Representatives, if they can get to the table.
Sure, I guess, I guess we'll pull out of here from applicant if that, if a phased approach would work for what they want also, right?
My understanding is that was their plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, she did hear from everybody. To jump on what Will said, the letter of availability, I think probably that's in your packet, explains that the existing infrastructure would only support a certain amount of homes at this time. But there is a 16-inch transmission line that, when that is constructed, would support the entire project. So that's the basis of existing infrastructure versus future infrastructure. We would also recommend that if this is approved, the, there will be a cost sharing for that 16-inch line, which we've already discussed with the applicant as well. But that would come later on in the process. Just wanted y'all to know about that.
Another thing, they're still asking for the block length distance and there's some question on sidewalks. What I say to build up to the sidewalk?
Yes, so sidewalks are your purview, planning commission. In terms of the block length, we've got some preset parameters for minimum and maximum block lengths based on the lot sizes that are allowed by zoning ordinance. They've done everything they can to meet with block length parameters. So it'd be appropriate to grant a waiver of that requirement if needed.
Let's hear from the applicant. Come up and state your name.
Yeah, yeah, hello, I'm Cole Newton, C K, the architecture engineer. Thanks for hearing me tonight. So yeah, we, we were here almost two years ago and, and working through it and got approval. It's the same block length that we had then. So yeah, we're asking for that same thing. From the, you know, water availability has been a discussion, you know, for the last two and a half, three years. And, you know, I think the last letter was talking more about the prorata and I think that's all the letter today. So I totally digested it. But, I mean, we, we're, we're acceptable to a phased approach. Like to get where our preliminary plaid, you know, I think it runs on a year here with Mount Pleasant. So as a phase, I guess, you know, we would, you know, think, you know, entitlement years grow as we start breaking ground and doing things with construction drawings. We have construction drawings in the next item on the agenda. We just want to make sure we're not going to get expired anytime once we get started, just based on the phases we're looking at.
I haven't looked at that specific issue, but I understand.
Yeah.
If you get close to the year, can you come back and ask for an extension at that point? As long as there's some activity where the board allows that.
Typically, once you break ground, start constructing.
Right, well, it extends at least a lot of bit while.
Well, now you're, as long as you are constructing, your plans are.
Good to know.
So for the preliminary plaid, we're just looking at sidewalks and stuff, not the phased, the phased approach would be for the number seven, the plan approval? Or is that all part of number six? Because there's two different things.
I would recommend you include that phase approved department to the landmark plaid so it would be documented on the preliminary sheet. And that'll then feed into the construction documents and eventually lead to the final plaid.
Is there a recommendation, recommendation from staff on what phased approach should be?
In speaking with the water consultant, you know, a number of lots between 20 to 25 seems appropriate based on our current capacity. And that should allow the city system to catch up as they contribute to those improvements and work out for everybody. That gives them lots to create and build and potentially transfer and help cash flow for us.
I understand.
And the purpose of the phase is to live off of the existing infrastructure until the 16-inch water line is, is completed. So at any point during this process, if they're only on phase two, but the water line is complete, I would think that that condition would be released.
What if it's in the reverts? What if they're going to phase two and the water line hasn't been completed? Or phase three?
We've also gone to Columbia Power and Water and are able to purchase up to 100,000 gallons a day through Columbia Power and Water for the next two years. So we've got our hands in a lot of different places to make sure that we're going to be okay on waters.
So that's a question that we'd ask the engineer, Alton Hutton, here today. If there's a certain number of homes that could be constructed without the addition of the 16-inch water line, that would, that would cap it. And I'm, I'm not sure if we know that answer.
20 to 25. We have a total number in mind that we don't want to exceed over this, what we anticipate being a three-year period for the construction of the transmission line.
So that would be 50 for this project or 25?
Over a three-year period.
Over a three-year period.
Over a three-year period, it would be 60 to 70.
60, 75, okay.
Well, that could be 50 to 70 prior to completion of this 16-inch line?
Yes.
So I could do two-thirds, basically.
And then the project expected to be coming online in that timeframe?
That's correct.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? I guess we'll entertain a motion on the preliminary plaid approval. The 350-foot block length and sidewalks and a phased approach.
What about the sidewalks?
Basically, we need to decide if sidewalks are appropriate here or not. That will have an impact on the construction documents also. So if you decide it's appropriate for the preliminary plaid, we won't make the same condition.
Where the blocks approved, the sidewalks approved in the prior one?
I don't.
No, we didn't, we did not have sidewalks in our prior approval either.
But we had the block.
They had the block, but we didn't, we weren't providing sidewalk.
It is kind of an interesting area. There's not a lot of current destinations close by people to walk to unless they work across the street. You okay?
Yeah.
If on the typical section, I think we would request, we would ask that it be accepted as we have it, to listen to your direction.
So you're saying you don't think they're?
Not necessarily needed for a tie into the rest of the community. Because there is no rest of the community in that area.
Yeah.
I've got my personal opinion, but it's, it's kind of up to y'all to make that call. There's no, there's not a lot of guidance language in your subrates currently. It's really just kind of up to you, what you feel appropriate, face to face.
Entertain a motion on the cottages of the Bearwood Preliminary Plaid Approval?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve it and that we allow the minimum block length to be 350, as requested. Give that waiver. And that we, with the phased-in approach for the water buildup, then be at first 20 to 25 lots and, and 60 to 70 before that new line goes live.
So maybe no more than 25 lots per year?
And a cap at 60 or 75?
75 at three, or 60 at three years, maybe.
Or before the water line goes.
Before the water line.
Yeah, 70 is what he said, 60 to 70, so.
Roll call on this?
Can I have more comments? Another part of the puzzle is that there will be a developer agreement proposed to you all at some point for this project participation in the cost for that 16-inch water line. I would just propose that this also be conditioned on a mutually agreeable developer agreement.
To go pass that?
Yes, to go pass that.
Go pass that.
Okay, and I add on that, this is conditioned upon after they reach the 70, that we reach an agreement on sharing the cost. How's that?
Is that after they reach 70 or is that?
That, that is for the construction of the 16-inch water line period.
Regardless of any.
Okay, okay.
They could go to 70. The last part of the letter talks a lot more about the prorata share and.
Yes, okay.
How y'all still working on how that breakout was looking.
The 70.
Yeah, okay, yeah. And I think we've reached a very limited concept, because that would have to come before this board. I just don't want that not to be documented.
Did I say enough to make it work?
Alright, we got, we got a motion and a second. Let's do a roll call on this one.
Cedric Collins?
Aye.
Bobby Nutt?
No.
John Hunter?
Aye.
Jennifer Graham?
Aye.
Pam Johnston?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number seven, this is the construction plan approval for the cottages of Bearwood.
First plan request becomes Bearwood on 78.14 acres identified on tax map 127 parcel 25, parcel 00 located at Magnolia Drive and Canyon Road for the construction of 95 single-family homes. The property is owned R3 High Density Residential. The owner of the property is Noah Marshall.
Will, you want to?
Basically, the construction documents reflect what's on in the preliminary plaid. Don't believe utilities had any outstanding issues with the design, except for everything we just talked about, the first water and everything else.
Does that need to be included in this motion, Corey, that we have to reflect? That was in the number six motion?
Yeah.
Any questions for the engineer or any comments other than what we already had? Take a motion on number seven for the construction plan approval?
I'll try again. I make a motion that we accept the construction plan with the waiver of the minimum block length of 350 and the phased approach for the water buildup, knowing that at some point we'll work out a cost share plan.
Second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call again.
Cedric Collins?
Aye.
Bobby Nutt?
No.
John Hunter?
Yes.
Jennifer Graham?
Yes.
Pam Johnston?
Yes.
Uh, number eight, Landmark Ceramic Sewer Utility Easement Final Plaid Approval?
Final Plaid Request for Landmark Ceramics identified on tax map 126 parcel 003, 004 located at 1427 North Main Street. We abandoned 100, 1,200, in your feet of sewer line easement and reestablished 1,206 feet of sewer line and utility easement. The property is owned HIL Light Industrial. The property is owned by U S P Incorporated.
And this was just to clean up over a dimension from last time? And that's being cleaned up right away?
Dollars have agreed to the 30-foot eastern and it goes to the northern boundary of their property. And it is on their property. The only thing that may, only thing that will be in this one, it will be, we're waiting on the TDEC approval for the construction drawings for the sewer line. And once we have the TDEC construction drawings approval, then the final plaque could be recorded.
Does that need to be condition of their approval?
So that's something we can approve with, with conditions?
And if you remember, the last time there were three conditions on this project, one was that the easement go all the way across the bound, like across to the other boundary line, that the easement be expanded to, I believe, 30 feet?
Yeah, there's one area that was 20.
Okay, yeah, extended it to make it consistent throughout for construction. And then the TDEC letter and like Chris said, they're still working on that. So that would be the only condition remaining. And we're not doing the bond today, is that right? Or is that?
That, the condition of the bond.
Okay, sorry.
Take a motion on Landmark Ceramic Sewer Utility Easement Final Plaid Approval?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, do we make that with a stipulation or they have to have to state?
They have to state it, yeah.
Uh, number nine, Landmark Ceramics Maintenance Bond Approval?
T W Crowson has requested the ownership of 1,206 linear feet of sewer line improvement at 1427 North Main Street, Landmark Ceramics, through the public utility by placing a maintenance bond in the amount of 115,100, 115,136 dollars, held by Liberty Mutual Surety. And I placed the surety bond in the packet. And of course, it would follow the approvals, additional approvals for the final plan.
So it can't be released until you get TDEC approval?
The planning commission recommends the approval for the bond at that point, and it will go to the full commission.
I think the opposite of what you said. It, it goes into place upon final approval.
Okay.
And then it lasts. It's two years?
Two years, two years is what's listed.
So the, y'all will officially make the recommendation to the, the full commission to accept the bond upon receiving that TDEC letter. So it, it goes with acceptance. So when the city accepts the project, they accept the bond. Right?
Correct.
We'll take a motion on the Landmark Ceramics Maintenance Bond Approval?
Make a motion.
I think it is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, number 10, Dollar General Final Plaid Approval?
Yes, this one's also called Minor Subdivision, Permanently Associated. The plaid's related to the Dollar General Site Plan, which is the next on the agenda. Basically takes one more block, creates a lot permit. It's currently low sanitary service to this part of town. So the lots could be served by septic. That's shown on lot two, or it's shown on lot one, but not on two. There is one condition to make a condition to show where that septic tank is. Existing lot, existing house, existing building survived. Just making sure we don't put in any complications. Everything else, we do have a few comments outstanding. The utility department asked that the gas lines be shown. If that wasn't picked up, survey for run-through. And then note three is to show how wastewater being serviced for lot two. That's for the residents. There is no, evidently there's no previously reported plaid to the town. And just requested that they consider a common access drive to the line with the shopping center. Looks like the document that's in that. But it's not a strong requirement. It's not helped with reducing conflict points.
Alright.
And the applicant is in the audience. If you would like to ask any questions?
I think we'd like to hear from applicant on this. Please.
Elliot Morsey with the developer. In regards to the, it's a few comments, the existing septic system, we've talked to the owner and TDEC, like their whole database, and they, I think it was just put in so long ago that they don't have anything on, I mean, the business and the house are on septic, but we just don't know exactly where they are and it's not in their database. But we have identified soils on ours and we do have a septic permit in the rear of our building. And we can work with TDEC, but they're just really hard to get out there to locate the, on the building. And the gas line, I think, Chris, you said someone in the department is going to get out there and mark it. And as soon as it's marked, our surveyor can go out there and toss it on the plaid. That will take, but a day to do. So I don't know if that has happened yet.
I'll check tomorrow.
Okay, awesome. And then what was, any other questions?
The common act of the access drive.
We've lined up, we worked with TDOT on that. We met them out there and we're lined up the way they wanted us to with the shopping center across the street, so.
Used to jump into a final plaid, but we have a preliminary plaid.
Well, that preliminary plaid, so when you're, you know, outlining infrastructure and roads, so preliminary is not required in this instance. An existing property, just subdividing one lot. It's kind of funny that there's so many interesting kind of wrinkles with this particular one with not a previous plaid or not a lot of information, a septic system. You know, it's there, we just don't know.
If there's one lot now, they're separating into two?
Actually, not a recorded lot, it's just a land.
Piece of land, okay.
Kind of interesting. But nothing improper here, so it's kind of unique.
In real estate, I run into septic records missing a lot. So I get that.
This, this comes up every once in a while. We can either work with them and their surveyor to better, have a better understanding of where those field lines are and where the tank is located so that someone knows that.
You're going to do demo too? That was one of the questions. Are both existing buildings?
We won't know. That's on the other lot. Our lot's vacant.
Your lot's vacant, okay. You're portion of.
Dollar General's only concern.
They're immediately next to the show.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay. Questions, comments? Entertain a motion on the Dollar General Final Plaid Approval?
I'll make a motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Number 11, Dollar General Site Plan Approval?
That, here, Jesus.
We'll let Chris talk first. You, you take that seat right there, that'd be fine.
Montgomery V. Carter, Sr., has submitted a site plan and several construction plans for Dollar General Store for the purpose of development of a property located on North Main Street. The property is further identified as tax map 111, a portion of parcel 31.03 and 31.05, and legally reported at County Michigan Beach. The property is owned CH Highway Commercial.
Big question's number two on, on the questions is, well, is the current site plan is incomplete? Is it completed now? Do we have any updates on whether this is a complete site plan or not?
There's a few outstanding items that could either be addressed as conditions of approval. Depends on your level of comfort. We believe we're still missing a photometric plan, some details on landscaping plan, and other items noted under number two.
There was like a snow sign plan, there was.
Yeah, and Chris talked about that. That may not be as big an issue. He would prefer to permit those signs individually outside of the site.
We made Big Tire Garage have it all in there, so. It'd be better if we had it all in, if it's part of the site plan.
We will make sure that happens with people. The land bank parking, this is the same kind of issue we dealt with previously on another site. They've got plenty of room for that and they've shown how they can accommodate those sections if it's needed.
There was some question on how many parking places they needed first. Maybe we had the wrong classification for it.
Yes, that was my.
Okay, good on that.
And, you know, don't shy away from the land bank parking that allows them to decrease their, their areas.
Will, how does that work? Does, does city staff come back to the planning commission and say, their parking lot's always full, so we need to do something? Or what's the process for that? We haven't done it.
There's a way to handle it.
Okay.
If there does appear to be an issue, just ask a representative to come in and show volunteering.
Okay.
Just explaining for the record what the problems are and how they could be addressed. But the site plan does accommodate that expansion of parking lot if it is needed.
Okay.
Really, the light, light plan and the, and the sign plan, if that's what we want? In, in the land bank?
The photometric plan, I, I sent that to you probably about three weeks, maybe three weeks to a month ago. The photometric plan, so you do have that. I believe if you don't, let me know, but we have that completed.
I may have had that as electronic, but not hard copy, but.
And then for the signs, whatever you guys need.
One other issue that doesn't come up quite that often, and it's really a preference thing that you can lay if you feel necessary. Parking in the city district is encouraged to be on the side of the rear. Obviously, they've got a septic tank in the back that they need to stay off of. So probably get a reason to.
Any other questions? Entertain a motion on the Dollar General Site Plan Approval with, with conditions, without conditions? Somebody see that seat fit?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve it pending condition on the sign plan being approved as well. And I mean, he says he has the photometric, so what else is that? Yeah. It should go, land bank for the parking be included in the.
If, if we, if we want it.
Yeah. Include the parking situation?
To include the land, land bank parking.
Okay, to include the land bank parking.
I'll stick in that.
Do a roll call on this one?
Cedric Collins?
Yes.
Bobby Nutt?
Yes.
John Hunter?
No.
Jennifer Graham?
Yes.
Pam Johnston?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number 12, Trilogy Hill Subdivision Sketch Plan Approval? Number 12, Trilogy Hill subdivision sketch plan approval.
Trilogy Land LLC has submitted a sketch plan for Trilogy Hill subdivision on one hundred and thirteen acres. One hundred and thirteen point six acres containing twenty-six lots of single family homes. The property is further identified as tax map one twenty-six parcels forty-one point twenty and forty-one point forty-eight through fifty-four. And legally reported at Murray County Register, the property is owned R1 low-density residential. And the applicants are in the audience for questions.
Think there's a water problem with this one also, the way it's laid out from what I can read, there's a water problem with this one also from what I can read. Some, some of the houses are at a higher elevation than what, what we just about had.
In fact, they're only at elevation of seven point five and below potentially fifteen by other lots.
I guess we'd like to hear from the developer and.
Hey, didn't think we were hearing us today, uh, Cole Gomnitz from SCG Civil. Uh, just to jump to that water comment, we, we have worked out something with, on individual lots that are higher than that, that have individual pumps. Uh, as long as, when they re, re look at the letter availability for those units, we only had twenty-six lots, so it seems like what I'm saying, that's plenty for each development. That those individually have individual booster pumps, and so we can be able to handle that. Um, anyways, might I just give an overview of the project? Sort of sketch plat mode here, not the sketch plat mode, not, you know, parcel map or anything. Um, so projects just north of the Rattle and Shake plantation, but south of it in, um, yes. Outlet, um, it's at the northeast edge of the property or the city limits. Um, and currently it's accessed off of, off of the easement, that's just, that's just past that Rattle and Shake plantation parcel. Rattle Snap, sorry.
It's okay, this one's clarified.
Yeah, Rattle Snap, thank you, um, so just the next parcel up, I think it's Froggy's or something like that. Um, there is a access road that accesses a very nice, a state home on, on top of that hill. Uh, there's currently eight lots there now with only one home on it, that estate lot. Uh, and it's, has public water, electricity, gas, and it's on private septic. Our proposal would be to do twenty-six lots, but come off of Polk Lane, because we do have a adjoining parcel that hits, uh, Polk Lane. So a new city standard minor, minor, um, residential road section. So that'd be what the other poll was proposing, um, is the ditch, the ditch, the side ditches as opposed to curb garden sidewalk. And that would go through the, the entire, uh, hundred and thirteen acres in, in a cul-de-sac for fire turnaround, for emergency vehicle turnaround. The, uh, utilities will still, we propose utilities to be the same, public water, gas, electric, and then private septic for each lot. And we understand with block distances and, and cul-de-sac lengths, uh, that were longer than what's typical. And we would like to propose to have intermediate, intermediate turnouts for emergency vehicles to make those block lengths, uh, realized.
What would keep you from being able to have another access and taking that out? I mean, is there not, because that makes me really nervous, only really having one entrance and exit.
You nervous for the residents or for fire life safety?
Yeah, I mean, if there's a fire and they can only get so far or whatever, I mean, I just feel like, is there, what would be the process? Is this other, is this property owned by somebody else?
It is, yeah. Yeah, we, we, there is an access easement, but it's, it's not a, any way we can maintain that road or, or do anything with it. We, we're proposing to keep it as emergency access only for emergency vehicles secondary access.
You'd have to maintain somehow, even though to, to do that, right, Greg, am I, am I missing something?
Well, it's being used now, right, and so we're not proposing to do any improvements on it since we don't have a mechanism to do so. Um, and then the primary access is off Polk Lane.
There are, uh, just to speak to this issue a little bit more, um, the, this is a sketch plat, so this is a great time to talk through some of these issues before they spend even more time designing and, and thinking through how to serve the property. Um, subdivision regulations, they speak to block length and things like that, but they also limit cul-de-sac lengths to five hundred feet, so that's what we tried to note in our comments. And, and just happy to think through how to get around that problem, but easiest, keeping those that easy, might be to purchase additional right of way for a punch through up towards Main Street. But it's easy for me to say that here, I'm not vested in this development, um, but that would allow people's contact, a more complete thoroughfare through the development and ease of access to the residents and emergency services. So while we're just brainstorming, you know, it might be something worth thinking about. Um, what the advantage of this sketch plat items is that you can really provide a lot of broad input for them to consider going forward into the preliminary plat. So happy to discuss that a little more, these are proposed to be served by septic. Um, technically in the subregs, it's up to use the planning commission to determine if sewer is reasonably available, it is a good distance away, it's at landmark. Like landmark's always the.
The landmark.
The end of the road.
But we've got to do an easement here now, so, um, but that is something that we need to consider as well. The lots are large, they vary in size, I think it's probably reasonable to consider that some of them might be resubdivided in the future. That's obviously not what they're proposing, but it's something we probably need to be aware of, uh, as you consider a legal change. And if that would require additional roads, serve them adequately.
But that would have to come back to the planning commission.
Yes, but it might be a situation where we're looking at a minor plat with a onesie twosie kind of subdivision plat instead of a more complete nature subdivision.
To sway any fears of re-subdividing down the road and not having adequate infrastructure, we're willing to offer a, a deed restriction, saying you can't. I mean, just keep this completely rural, keep that characteristic of it.
Yeah, I think I read that here somewhere about that, that's what. I believe, I believe our water engineer would like to say a word to us, please.
Before we get to the construction plans, one of the things we want to see is the methodology for the pumps to serve the higher elevations and hydraulic calculations. Make sure that that doesn't affect the lower, the higher levels, lower elevations, and anybody else that's in and around that area.
Yeah, understood.
That, that would come as a condition when we get to farther down the road, though.
Yeah.
Correct, this is just a sketch, just basically a concept.
A good time to talk about it.
Yeah, absolutely, it's the best time to talk about it.
Yeah.
I know we've talked about that property a few times.
Also with the deed restrictions, I know y'all know this, but we don't enforce those, we don't, you know, really have authority to. We're not putting them in place and we don't enforce them, that's something that they would just be doing on their own, um, but, but not within your ability to control.
So we can make it a condition at some point, I mean, I'm just.
This doesn't have much, you don't have any recourse for, for enforcing.
Yeah.
Yeah, except for the landowners?
Yes.
I mean, we can put it on the final map, the final plat, and so they'll build the.
Right, but they can't enforce them, that's what I'm saying.
We can't do it, like the neighbor to enforce them, or somebody in the community to enforce them, yeah, like normal HOA.
And we can't really do a contract approval either, so that's what makes me a little.
Yeah.
Uncomfortable with that, that trade-off, but I understand that would help, that would practically solve the problem, but you don't have control over that.
Does the fire department have any concern? Um, Philip?
Philip's here.
No, not at this point on the sketch plat, I know you guys are trying to get them direction to go, um, I didn't necessarily know when Will brought it up that the five hundred feet in cul-de-sacs. Uh, now in our fire code, we have to finish stop at more than thirty homes you need to weigh in, but I do agree with Will, we need to look at that further. Uh, so there's a lot of moving parts here when it comes to the access, um, even being, I mean, the, the current road is in pretty bad shape, it goes to the Wednesday home. I'm not sure we can get an engine lighter there now, we can get a smaller there, but I think it's a lot more to explore on that as far as the sign of. Uh, my biggest concern is, is elevation, fire protection, how are we going to take that? But I, I don't think we're to that point right now.
I think as a concept, to me personally, it sounds like a good use of the land if you're doing five, six acre lots, four mile acre lots to maintain some of the rural feel, but. It is where the city can support it.
Again, you're keeping that, having your roads is, is important nowadays, I, I think it's a design of current. Having cul-de-sac runs in that part and that ends to me is, is not a real current methodology of growth.
You also have to consider like, you know, the continuity of your roads and your sidewalks and all of that as well, I mean, in the big picture of the city planning.
In this case, we're not proposing sidewalks.
Yeah, I know, but.
There's nowhere to walk to.
There's nowhere to walk to.
Landmark, landmark. Any other questions, comments?
So just to be clear, what we're proving tonight, we could still add in the need for another access point and another data, that would have to be done now.
This, this is just a sketch plat, this is going to change, but what they're asking for is don't let them spend a lot of money on something that you're not going to.
You're not going to.
Improve later on.
Right.
So if we have a strong feeling it needs to have two entrances and exits left, let them know now, yeah, I got you.
Um, the developer wants to say something?
Sure, come on in, state your name.
Good evening, I'm Joe Stafford, the landowner and, and be the developer of the project. Um, you know, to talk about that second access, that's there now, it's been there all this time as far as an easement. The easy thing would have been to buy it, we've approached them, we've talked to them, there's no interest, there's no cooperation. Um, when we were talking about a higher density subdivision, we tried to approach it as a second access, there was again, no interest, no cooperation, no. Not even a, you know, kind of any kind of negotiation or communication. So while it, it looks like it's good there, what we really have is a drive easement, and that's all we have to do there. We don't have the rights to tear it all up, do all these improvements, do anything to it, certainly we can't dedicate it to the city, it's not our land. Um, and that's why we've gone through the expense designing the road coming in off Polk, where we actually have county, um, roads and can bring a county road into the project. And serve all the lots today, we're serving eight lots, that's what platted there, it's been platted a long time. Um, and we could stay with that, it's not a great access, nobody really wants to come down a dirt road. Again, there's no maintenance or shared cost agreement with the owner to maintain that in any way. Um, so we can't enforce anything or even maintain it ourselves and then force them not to use it in any way, there's some trucks out there and a few things, they don't really do too much there, but. Again, there's no way, alls you need to do is put a nice paved drive down, and guess what? That looks like a great way to come into the buildings and use that instead of the dirt road that they're using on this site. And again, we have no ability to share costs or anything, and we've approached that, the family that owns it, um, more than one time, matter of fact, I would say five times. Um, so it's, that was, that was the easy button, would have been, hey, can we buy this, can we improve it, can we share costs together, what can we do? Um, and that was really thought when we were first doing the higher density one, because it would be required. Um, that's why we approached a different access, which didn't work out, so we've really exhausted that. Um, and that's why we kept this under the thirty lot requirement that the city code, uh, fire has talked about, to make sure that it isn't too dense. And are willing to restrict it in some way, I know you say it's not forcible, a deed restriction holds up pretty good, I know the city can't do it.
Right.
But certainly a neighbor, anyone, any citizen can say, hey, that's deed restricted, and that's how we normally do it. Or we do it through some set of CCNRs that says none of the lots can be subdivided, but those are still things that the city can't control. But that's done all the time in subdivisions for many restrictions that you approve or other cities approve, and that would be the mechanism we would use to ensure that there'd be no further development. Um, certainly working through the water pressure things, where things that we'll do down the road and that it all has to match up or it won't get approved in our construction drawings or approvals. But I just wanted you to know, we have exhausted that in many, many attempts and gotten zero. We, we'd love to have that, to have two access, we'd probably go with more density, um, because it's, it would be allowed there, uh, under our current zoning, but we know we can't do that. And I'm happy to answer any other questions you guys might have for me.
What, what's the total dis, distance front to back? If, if it is truly just one road in, one road out, what's, what's the total distance?
Well, and that, and the existing road.
The, the new road.
Oh, the new road, oh, yeah, well, I mean.
Because that's what we're talking about, because you have no access to the other road, we're talking about one road in, one road out, how far is it to the last house?
What's, is that strip along, is what?
Yeah.
I mean, we only have that strip to come up, that's a long ways there before we even get to any houses.
Yeah.
Don't add a mark, but it's over, it's over a thousand feet for sure.
Fifteen or eighteen hundred or something, maybe all, but I think it's supposed to be.
And what we're willing to do is on the end, is make sure that there's an access point on the end there, so there's always a road, I mean, a drive to get through. Probably what we've done in other developments, is you do a breakaway gate, they call it basically, where basically a tap's open, and then somebody could use it for emergency access coming in or going out. If there was a fire or something to block, and that road is there, that easement is there, but again, we have limited access to that as far as what we can do to it.
Would the road, would the road coming in be, how wide would that be, for instance, if, if there was, let's say, a big fire? And fire trucks are trying to come in and people are trying to get out at the same time, I mean.
Well, it's, it's a county road, equal to.
It's the city, it's the city standard.
Oh, city, excuse me, city standards, I'm sorry. So it's built, the, the roads that we're proposing into the subdivision and through, from Polk Lane are all to city standard.
Yeah.
All of that would be to city standard, what we can't do is the secondary access other than an access easement, and that's why we want to keep it.
Guess what we might be wanting to talk about, maybe it ought to be wider than what the city requires, if you were really wanting to look at that with, with no turnaround or anything, I don't even know that that's doable, but.
Yeah.
Pull in there, you got people parked on the streets, you got, you know, you got one way.
These are pretty big lots, the goodness is, it's not like a typical, you know, where people.
Shoulder, we got, what, um, four foot shoulders and eleven foot. And so it's like thirty feet.
Okay.
But in other jurisdictions I've seen for, for these longer lots that serve, or these longer roads that serve large lots, is intermediate, either intermediate cul-de-sacs or, um, turnouts, you know.
They'll just take and actually put it, you know, where it would be to give, so there's plenty of room to do the turn there, and of course, we have the land inside the subdivision, that lane is a little tougher, I mean, you know, coming up. But inside, we're certainly no problem doing that wherever it's needed, so the fire emergency would be able to stop here and turn around, not have.
Right, have to go all the way to the end of that.
Yeah, we would do several of those that would help mitigate that problem. And again, we have the land inside, once we're in the subdivision, we have that space to add an extra ten feet or whatever in width for the length that it needs to turn around, and we'd be happy to do that.
Really, there's no action item necessarily, but if there is, if you do have additional thoughts, African, um, we can approve it with other thoughts or ideas that you want to consider to want to, but it's a little bit of a unique.
Have you seen these in other communities, your wealth of information on, on one way in, one way in, one way out?
Oh, the city, yeah, there's, there's endless.
Yeah.
Types of cul-de-sacs or dead ends or anything like that.
Well, that's not required, so that tells a lot.
You wonder the required amount, I mean, so it's done all the time, I mean, many times, and this again is unique in the sense of, we would love the secondary access, we'd go more density. But there's just no way to get that, we've tried every approach that we know of. we know of.
I think the key, one key thing to think about that can kind of get lost in the details is, you know, how, what's the best way to serve the full property? You've got a lot of rolling terrain and to deal with and navigate some streams and some wooded areas, and then you've got this potential second access that sounds like there's not a lot of potential there. So how, can we try to meet our requirements?
Which I think we've met the requirements. Basically, everything we're asking here has met the current requirement. Am I correct? Meaning under the 30 for the, of the second access and the county.
Well, you've got the cul-de-sac lane. You've got additional land that may need to be serviced, you've got a shared access agreement between couple lots. What would happen if that came, another road, maybe it loops around, I don't know.
Loops around, it's like a dead end into that, those two lots.
Right.
There's no loop, because they, it's got a straight uphill.
Right.
The hill is lit, you can't hardly walk it, but there's no way to drive.
With a lot of conditions, so.
But the main road and the main access to all of that is kind of a flat, I mean, an easy accessible area.
Right, and then you're dealing with creeks and you do things like that. So if there's any other concerns that y'all have related to the property itself or how you want them to approach it, now's a great time to share.
I think the turnout, just having some additional ways for traffic to flow in an emergency situation would be huge.
Yeah, we'd be happy, like I said, to do that, where, you know, that cul-de-sac requirement or whatever it is, we just widen that road up to make sure that that could happen for emergency access. And/or, I mean, the road's right enough for two vehicles easy, but for a big turnaround, and that could apply to a school bus or something if they came in there too. So that would also, they wouldn't have to go to the end of the cul-de-sac if they decided the best spot to turn is, you know, in a certain middle area, they would, we would have those there. So that's not a problem.
Yeah, to me, I guess it just depends on, I think conceptually, it's probably okay with a few tweaks, I mean, I don't.
That's what you're looking at.
Right, I mean.
The concept.
I think the concept is good, I would love to see five, six acre lots there and not 100 houses.
So beautiful out there.
It is beautiful out there, and that's what we're looking for, it's nice, and there's a nice home to start on, there's a beautiful home on there.
White home.
And it won't, the other ones won't be that, because this is a really big house, but they'll still be complimentary to it.
Yes.
Which will also be great for, I mean, you know, from a sense value, from building the standpoint, tax value, everything, sales, all of it, it all, we want to make it cohesive, you know? And again, that drive's going to be kind of nice coming up, and a treat a little bit and stuff, so there's a little uniqueness to the property, that kind of helps, but that's really more from aesthetic standpoint, not really from, you know, meeting code and that kind of thing, but we kind of want to go with that feel and compliment that. It's a great piece of property.
Any other questions? We don't need a motion on this?
I mean, you're just approving a sketch plat, you're not really, there's no.
We're approving a concept at this point, so.
So do we do it or not?
You're really not giving ideas.
Yeah, you can approve the sketch plat, but it doesn't give anybody.
I guess if you agree with the concept in general, we should approve it, if you don't agree with the concept in general, we shouldn't approve. My thoughts, right?
I agree with the concept, I'm making a motion here.
Make a motion? We have a second?
Second.
We'll do a roll call.
Cedric Collins?
Hi.
Bobby Nutt?
No.
John Hunter?
Want to be I?
Jennifer Graham? And Pam Johnston?
Hi.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing this down the road, what it may turn out to be.
Very good. Thank you.
To be fair, the reason we're weird about that is because there's no, this is right, this is just giving them directions.
I understand, but I just didn't know.
There's been some long.
Yeah, and we have, you know, again, with approval, like, you could conditionally approve something based off of restriction that exists in your zoning, like the 30 houses for fire, you could have a restriction, you can't go over that. But we don't have the ability to do a separate contract approval of condition on you putting in restrictions in place that puts 26, you know, because that's not a number that we have. So that's, that's the hair I was trying to split.
I understand.
Anyway.
We have any old business?
No old business.
Other business?
Other business, I would like to find out, when was the last time the board had training?
You'll have to look at your records, sorry.
Yeah, it's that long ago.
We did it with.
Rodney?
Yeah, you and Rodney had a training session, yeah.
Six months?
Six months or so.
Well, I know I emailed you, but it was a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
Think we're all going to be gone?
Yeah. I'll see myself.
Yeah, likewise.
I mean, at the same time, we're invited to the Thanksgiving lunch and for the city at the same time, so.
So what do you do?
Is it something that can be recorded?
It'd be nice if we could have training that's recorded, we could watch it our own.
And you're okay, yeah.
I'll check with Chuck Downe, he is the one that acts as technicalist.
Well, since it's online, I guarantee you they're going to record it.
It would be great, it would be a possibility, and I just want to keep up with our training and sort of turn on that, so.
Please, there's business.
I'll look back in the records and find out when the last training goes and how many hours it takes.
We have any other board or staff comments?
I'm not going to be here next month.
Not going to be here next month, okay. Everybody else will be here next month. Time for citizen comments, nobody signed up, but is there anybody here that would like to speak before we leave today? 17 will take a motion for adjournment.
Good motion.
Second.
Favor I.